All right. We don't, let me get to the right one, workshop, all right. Thank you, at five fifteen we will start the workshop. Roll call please.
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Mayor Mongi.
Here.
Thank you, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda please?
I'll make a motion.
So move, Councilmember McKenzie.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Nordby, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. See you, Andrew Randall, please.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, two topics this evening, we're gonna have, uh, department updates, the first one is gonna be the electric department and the Public Works to follow, I will turn it over to John Wick, our electric director.
Thank you, can you, can you hear me good?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll do, uh, just a little bit of background about myself, uh, the department, um, and then, uh, kinda dip into a few different topics, uh, if you have any questions along the way, feel free to stop me. And, uh, and if you have any at the end, uh, I'll see, leave a little bit of time, um, and then I got my contact info on there if you're, uh, if you think of anything later, we can always, uh, talk on the phone or you guys can come visit whenever you want, so. I don't have a mouse. Okay. Uh, so, uh, the first few topics, talk about myself, um, what it is to be a North St. Paul electric worker, um, how you become an electric worker, uh, a little bit about our department and then, uh, I have some pictures of the guys, uh, doing what they do, so. Myself, I was hired in two thousand nine as a seasonal. I've been basically every position in the electric utility, uh, was a seasonal, I came on as a utility locator for a while, um, and I was an apprentice lineman, journeyman, uh, and then superintendent and now, uh, director, uh, all under Brian. I think I mentioned before that, uh, I owe a lot to Brian, he definitely taught me a lot coming up. I completed my apprenticeship through the city, uh, the, we offer apprenticeship through Northwest Lineman College, that's what all our apprentices go through, it's a four-year program, uh, we give them all credit for a year if they go to a, an accredited, uh, training program. I'll touch a little bit more on that in a bit, um, I grew up in the metro area, I'm from Forest Lake, um, I currently live there now with my wife and my two kids. So what is, uh, a North St. Paul line worker, they, uh, service the electrical distribution system, uh, that entails a lot of things, there's, um, you know, installing and maintaining the high voltage lines, uh, your tree trimming, clearing, uh, trees away from any overhead power lines, uh, they're putting in new underground high voltage lines, service lines. We're changing out poles, equipment, um, working on live power, uh, the guys all wear protective rubber gear when they're, they're working on the, the high voltage, I have some pictures of that here. You're on call twenty-four seven, uh, there's always at least somebody from our department, um, ready to answer the phone, um, and reali- realistically, uh, if anything happens, you know, there's, needs to be two to three people ready to come in at any given time. Uh, they operate equipment, uh, the, kind of the bread and butter for, um, any electric workers are, are bucket trucks and our digger derrick trucks, uh, for setting poles and, and working on the old red lines. They also work, um, everything for, for moving earth too, uh, pretty much anything in our shop, uh, minus some of the water and sewer equipment, uh, those guys operate. Uh, you also need to be able to climb, the guys, uh, all learn how to climb in school and then, uh, we still, uh, fairly often practice that, uh, we do have equipment to kinda get around it sometimes, but, um, it doesn't work all the time, you gotta climb, so. Uh, and then anybody that's, uh, been with us, uh, that's now a journeyman is expected to have completed that, uh, any sort of apprenticeship, there's, there's different kinds out there, we do, like I said, Northwest Lineman College, uh, we found that to be very effective in, in training the, the young apprentices. Grabbing that mouse. So it's important to, you know, stay physically active, uh, your, 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 your role is calling for you to do anything from digging the ditch to, you know, climb poles or dragging brush, uh, need to be able to work outdoors and enjoy it, um, complete high school, uh, GED. You have to have a commercial driver's license and, uh, like I had said before, you need to go to, um, an accredited program, Dakota County Technical College and, uh, M State, Wadena have the, are the, kinda the two most popular in the state. And then after your school, uh, once you've become a lineman, you need to complete a four-year apprenticeship program, um, it's good to note that not all utilities offer apprenticeships, um, some only wanna hire journeymen, so, that we offer an apprenticeship is, uh, very appealing to guys out of school or just with a little bit of experience that just haven't had that opportunity, so. I think we have a good draw for, um, if we are in need of employees, uh, you know, that we offer that, it's, uh, uh, very appealing, but not that we need them that often, I think we have a good crew of guys that, uh, I foresee them sticking around. Our current department does have seven line workers and it, and then a utility worker, uh, locator, and of those linemen, we have two apprentices, uh, we did have three up until, uh, last week, one of them passed his final test and, uh, he'll be getting his certificate in the mail here in the next month, so. It was, uh, it's kind of a big deal, the guys, you know, they, they take a test, um, one test a month for, for three to four years, um, just to, to pass the program, uh, and they gotta pass it with at least an eighty percent or better on every test, so. They put a lot of work into it and, uh, studying on their own time, uh, you know, we expect them to be at work and, and putting in the time here and then putting in the time at home as well, so, it's a big achievement when, uh, they, they finally get through that program. Uh, we do have, uh, I have there that, uh, we have a variety of years of service, um, of our apprentices, uh, one's been there for two years, we also have the most senior employee in the city, uh, Dave Hosek, he's been there for forty years. And it's hard to say how much longer he'll be there, I, I hope he sticks around 'cause he's really good to work with, so. And then myself, the director and, uh, the electric superintendent, uh, Easton Dale, he would've been here today but, uh, had a, a family, um, a death in the family, so, he couldn't attend. Uh, here's some pictures, uh, guys working, uh, you know, on the left there, we got our, um, uh, we call it our backyard lineman, uh, that's kind of one of the pieces of equipment that's gotten us, um, saved us from climbing more than we have in the past. It's able to fit through a thirty-inch gate, so, uh, everything retracts in, we can drive into people's backyards and set it up and it's, uh, fairly, um, uh, doesn't cause too much damage to the yard, that's a lot of stuff that we can, we can fix pretty easily. Uh, and then you can see all the guys working with like their, their rubber gloves, um, working around energized lines, um, and just working in teams, uh, it's, uh, very common that you'll have two to three bucket trucks and, on one job, just because, uh, you need to be accounting for every situation, uh, there's, uh, you're working around stuff that's, um, hazardous to your health and could potentially kill you, you need to have people you trust up there and, and people that know what they're doing, so. Here's some pictures of the guys climbing, uh, believe it or not, the one on the left was me back in school, kinda hard to see from here, but I was a few pounds lighter and I could, uh, stand on a cross arm. Uh, but you can see, like, that, the other two pictures are, uh, some of our guys on the crew, um, you know, they're, it's very common to have two people on the pole at once, sometimes three, um, and, uh, you know, they use ropes and stuff to haul equipment up. Uh, I'm not gonna, like, go extent, there's a lot of information in here, so I won't go through all of it, uh, you guys have the presentation, but, uh, and you can kinda read what you, you like from that, but, uh, the, a little bit of the history, uh, we were, we started in eighteen ninety-eight, um, was purchased from private investors and, uh, there was at one point in, uh, the late nineteen fifties that, uh, Excel Energy, uh, NSP at the time tried to purchase us, um, and I guess, I appreciate that they didn't sell the utility at that time, um, uh, just because they kinda cited that it's, it's providing more funds for, you know, public safety and, uh, uh, roads and, uh, road construction and just, uh, another income source for the city, so. And then, uh, I, like I said, there's a lot of information on here and we actually have a, um, a brief history summary at the shop, so if anybody's interested, I can send them that too, it's got a lot more information than I put on here, um, but currently in two thousand nine, the building that we're in now, the Public Works Electric Shop, that's when it was constructed, it is the second building on that site and the third in the immediate area, it was the old, the community center, there was a building there before, that was the, the Public Workshop and Electric.
The streetcar maintenance garage.
I'd say there's, uh, you, you, you guys might know more about it than I do, uh, but, um, yeah, we have, uh, roughly seventy-four miles of lines, overhead and underground, uh, high voltage, uh, we sell roughly seventy-one thousand megawatt hours a year and, uh, revenue equates to about twelve million dollars. Uh, we have, uh, it, that number actually is off by about eighty-nine because we just added the Article Seven building, but there's, um, a little over sixty-seven hundred customers, mostly residential on our system, we have no industrial, um, and no real big commercial customers either, so, a lot of residential and, you know, it's kinda that, I think, the small-town feel in big cities, so. Uh, we have one substation, it's down in Oakdale, um, right off of Highway Five, kinda by the fire training center there, I don't know if you're familiar with that area, we're on the opposite side of one-twenty from that, and there's a vaulted duck line that runs from the substation all the way to the Public Workshop, uh, there's three feeders in there that branch out, uh, kinda like a wagon wheel from the shop and that's kind of like our, the central location, we also have a fourth feeder that runs overhead along one-twenty from the sub, heads north up to, um, kinda by, uh, Silver Lake, up in that area. Uh, something that, uh, I think is a really great use of technology, um, we utilize smart meters, um, when I first started here, we were still on, uh, we had digital readout and mechanical meters, but they weren't smart meters, so somebody had to go around every month and get the reading, um, if anytime there was an issue, we would have to send alignment out to pull the meter, disconnect it, um, if, you know, for non-payment, if they, in the winter, we had to put these bulky limiters on the meter so that it would cycle the power on and off, uh, you're just putting people in harm's way, uh, by putting them in those situations, now with these smart meters, uh, they all communicate with each other and then they communicate, communicate back to City Hall, uh, we have, um, a gateway collector back at the shop that, or at the City Hall here that they all communicate back to, get the readings back to the billing department and they can send out the bills accordingly, they can also disconnect power for non-payment from, without sending anybody, anybody out there, and they have programs on them to limit the power as well in the winter, so we don't have to put those bulky devices out anymore. Uh, it's, uh, it's been, uh, I can personally say from experience and then I think I can speak for all the linemen that they greatly appreciate them, it may have taken away some of their overtime, but they are, I, their job's a lot more safe now 'cause they're not put in that situation anymore, um, at least not very often. We do, yeah, go ahead.
I first started working here, um, after disconnects, you could pay anytime you wanted to, you call in at two AM after you close down the bars and then lineman goes out there and returns it back on and pays you in cash and it, there was just a recipe for disaster, so, yeah, we stopped doing that.
Yeah, uh, I've heard many stories from, uh, those days, uh, but, uh, and then we're also completely LED, uh, that was, boy, it's probably two thousand nine, two thousand ten, uh, that we went completely to LED on all the streets and roads and, and the parks. Uh, here's just a little overview of our territory, uh, we got a little bit of maple wood, a little bit of Oakdale, um, uh, not, not too far outside of our, the city proper. A big thing that when, uh, we're working with residents is, uh, I like to reference, uh, this image, um, it, it, it dictates what we are responsible for and what the, the residents are responsible for, anything in yellow in that image is the resident's property and anything in green is ours, we own the overhead distribution lines, the transformers, the poles, um, the services to the home, overhead and underground, and the meter itself, if you can tell, on there is a little green meter on the front, but we do not own the meter box or the meter socket and the, uh, the mass pipe going up the side and any wires and that, those aren't ours, so, um, it's definitely, um, an eye-opener to people because in, um, the middle of a storm, that all gets ripped off the house. We're not, uh, we can't work on that stuff, we don't own it, so they have to get an electrician out to fix it before we can actually energize the house again. Luckily, most electricians out there, though they're not cheap, um, they will temporarily hook the power up, we'll hang it back on the house so that when they're done, uh, you know, they can get the power going right away again, but, uh, maybe one of the advantages of going underground with your service and, uh, we do offer putting services underground for, I think, a very reasonable price, it's six hundred and fifty dollars. But again, with that, there's, uh, costs on the residence end that sometime aren't seen, um, their meter box needs to be able to accept our underground wires and we only run two-hundred amp services underground, so if you have an old hundred amp meter box, a lot of times it won't take those wires, they're, they're too big, uh, and you have to have an electrician upgrade your meter box, so that costs more than having us come in and put the wire in, so a lot of people are real gung-ho about getting that service in, but, uh, you have to kind of explain to them, there's maybe more to it, and an electrician is good, it's, you know, they're sometimes a good salesman too and they might talk you into upgrading your panel at the same time and you're saving money, but you're spending a lot of money, so. We always kinda go into it with a little bit of, uh, caution, just, uh, people are very excited to have that done and we wanna do it for them, 'cause, um, you know, uh, having the services underground while there's advantages and disadvantages, um, those storms are, don't really become an issue anymore, so, uh, we just wanna see it happen. Yeah, yep, if you have, you know, everybody's got the phone and the cable lines going too and a lot of times if you can coordinate it with your phone and cable provider, they'll drop off wire, we'll put it right in the trench with them, so, get it all buried at once.
So do you go off the, like, closest pole then and go down, like?
It depends, um, you know, uh, sometimes they're fed right from a pole, uh, we might have, um, underground pedestal that is down in the, at the base of the pole or, or mid, middle of the backyards or front yards, wherever they are, and that's where you have a main feed going to it and, and there might be three or four houses coming out of that, that pedestal. We try to put pedestals at the base of the pole as much as we can, just to kinda gear towards the future, like, if there's a bunch of overhead services coming off that same pole, well, people are gonna wanna go underground eventually, we need to have somewhere to put it, we can't just keep going up the same pole and just clogging that pole with, with services, so, that's one way to kinda mitigate the, the clutter on that pole.
So if there are other overhead services on that same pole, do we, like, rent out space on that pole to, like, cable companies and phone companies and stuff like that, is that essentially how that works?
That's correct, yep, uh, they get charged, uh, per pole attachment.
Okay.
You know, and they're...
For like Quantum, they just installed our high-speed now, so.
Is that far enough?
Yeah, I've got, I've got all Quantum fiber now.
Hmm, yep, yep, they, they all...
Close.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean, you'll see again this summer, um, plenty of Lumen going in underground, uh, I'm sure you drove around the town last year, maybe even the year before and saw they're digging up the ground everywhere, they're putting fiber in all over town, so, I don't remember what their, uh, we had a conversation with them, I don't remember what their ultimate end date for it all was, but everything was going, they were gonna do the entire city, so.
Oh, the coppers failing, so they got to do something.
I suppose, yeah. All right, uh, and I just have, I don't have to go into all these, but this is kinda some common stuff when you're driving around, um, that you might see, um, everything new we put in is typically in the underground, it's the green transformers on the top, the smaller ones, more of a residential, single-phase pad mount, and then to the right of that, that's more of, you'll see that by, like, apartments and commercial buildings, it's, it's supplying three-phase power, so if they have big motors or, you know, rooftop units that need that, that three-phase power, that's, that's what's supplying it. Um, and then, uh, some of our bigger cabinets, like the switching equipment, um, that's a, it's called a switchgear, uh, there's, it's a way to switch main circuit feeders and to fuse lines coming off them and protect them and to feed, you know, other parts of town off of that piece of equipment. Uh, they're all over the city, uh, we're slowly working to, um, they have what's known as a live front configuration on them, uh, so when you open that door, there is live equipment right in front of you and we're moving to dead front on everything, so you, now you can't, you could, I'm sure you could get creative and shove your hand in there somehow, but from the outside, when you open the doors, everything is de-energized. There's energized equipment within the switch, but it's all encased inside of it.
Squirrels haven't figured a way to get in there yet?
Uh, I've seen possums.
Really?
They haven't got into lines, but you open it up and they're just, you know, laying down by the warm wires down there, you know, that's happened. But definitely less squirrel stuff when you gotta go underground, so. Real quick, uh, we had already kinda touched on the, the pole connections, but, you know, you can see in the middle there, you know, the top lines are us, the next one down is us, and then everything below that, the bigger stuff, that's the phone and cable companies, big misconception, we get a lot of call-outs for low-hanging wires, um, you gotta take them all seriously, but a lot of times you can kind of tell by the call, but you still gotta go investigate, so. If power is not out and a line's almost touching the ground, it's usually an indicator that it's not ours. Again, there's a lot of information here that, um, that I could spend a long time talking about, but we're part of, uh, organization called MMPA, uh, it's our power agency, uh, we're, we were, uh, one of the original members, uh, with, I think it was seven total cities, now there's eleven. Uh, the goal of that was to, um, not be so reliant on Excel for, uh, that's who we purchased our power from, now MMPA is who provides our power, we can compete with Excel, we can, you know, oftentimes our, our rates are lower than Excel's, uh, it's all dependent on, you know, um, if they have any big rate adjustments or, uh, you know, the time of the year, but, uh, that was the goal of that, uh, but now, I mean, it's even evolved to, um, you know, with all the, the mandates for renewable energy and state statutes for, um, for conserving energy, um, we utilize MMPA to help us manage those programs and to achieve, uh, the goals that have been set for us. I'll touch a little bit on it, um, but, uh, definitely, I think it's been a great benefit since we became part of that, uh, we, not only are we, um, independent from not relying on Excel, but, um, we're able to network more with other municipals, uh, all those eleven, they're all great utility leaders in those, those cities and people that have, you know, I feel like I've been in, in the utility for a while, but I have not seen nearly the things that some of them have and to be able to rely on some of them for, for, um, for information and just experiences has been a great boon to us. Uh, we have many sources for, uh, electricity, um, obviously we have our, uh, any, we have the fossil fuels, um, that, the goal is, uh, well, the, the mandate is to be a hundred percent by twenty forty, um, all renewables. I don't know how, um, realistic that is, but, uh, the, the, by twenty thirty, we need to be eighty percent, and I think that's a realistic, uh, target and it's achievable. I have links in here for, uh, MMPA site, uh, there's descriptions of what we currently utilize for solar and, and wind, um, and while there's hydro, but it's not really for us, it's, uh, for other communities, and then there's the last thing there, that biomass, that's kind of a unique thing, um, that I think our organization is kind of on the leading edge of, it's, um, utilizing, um, anaerobic digestion on fossil fuels and, or not fossil, fossil fuels, um, uh, food processing waste and agriculture waste, they, they collect the gases that are produced off it and they burn them in engines to produce power, and then there's, um, again, there's more information on MMPA, but they, they, it produces nutrient-rich byproducts too, and those are all captured as well. Uh, it's something that MMPA has been working towards, getting that as a credit towards the renewable and the carbon-free, uh, it's just something that, it's pretty unique to us and, and there's not a lot of places that are doing it yet, so, uh, just getting that accepted along those lines as well, is, uh, like, wind and solar. Uh, again, like I said, a hundred percent by twenty forty, eighty percent by twenty thirty, I believe it's ninety percent by twenty thirty-five, that's kind of what the state has set in place.
How much is it now, what percent are we at now?
Uh, we are currently, uh, it, it, it varies based on, um, demand, but, and, and then the production from the solar and the wind, but anywhere from mid-forties to mid-fifties typically. Yeah, yeah, right now twenty-five is what's required, but that, we're, at least the last meeting I was at, it was, uh, like, fifty-six percent. And they're in the process of, the biggest thing for hitting these goals is acquiring the land and, um, the interconnection application process, the, with the Public Utilities Commission, um, just having that transmission readily available and having, uh, the space to put it in, and there's a lot of utilities competing over this now, you know, that's, everybody's going, working towards this goal, so, getting it in place as soon as you can, and that's, you know, we have the, the Green Energy Choice Program here, um, where residents can elect to, um, pay an additional dollar to three dollars per billing cycle. can elect to pay an additional dollar to $3 per billing cycle, and that goes towards us being able to invest in more green energy, but it also guarantees that you're getting 100%. We're, we're at least covering you 100%. So as many people that are in the program, we are guaranteeing that we're, we're getting enough renewables to cover them at this time. And again, that's, I have a link here for the sustainables, but we also do have our own residential solar program. We offer rebates for that based on the size and the, the cost to install the solar for the customer. We currently have 19, but actually we are putting in two more this week, so it'll be over 20.
Five homes?
Twenty, 21 homes, yep, residential homes in, in town by the end of this week. And the rebates kind of vary based on the side, like I said. Anywhere, I've seen them anywhere from on the low end, like $800 all the way up to, you know, $2,500 rebate. They're expensive to put in, it's a high cost, high investment, may take a long time to recoup it, but, you know, anything, anything helps, and, and there's, you know, oftentimes there's other state and federal grants and, and money that you can get. We're not affiliated with that, but we can at least offer our rebate. Conservation Improvement Program, that's, I kind of touched on just briefly, but it, it's requiring, it's a state statute, it requires us to put it, give rebates and, and put into saving energy on our system. 1.5, 1.5% of our annual consumption, or KWH, usage, yeah, that's the right word. And then, and then we also have to have it hit a low income spending. Again, that's managed through MMPA, but there's different things that we offer besides just, we have rebates for solar, we have rebates for LED lighting, retrofits, new construction, appliances, there's AC tune-ups, AC installs. Just most recently, started adding the VFDs for, I mean, it's residential, but we'll be utilizing on the city wells, they're going to get new VFDs. Was it 10,000, I think, or something?
VFDs?
Half the cost, I think?
Okay.
Was it, was it? I can't remember exactly. Yeah. I don't know off the top of my head, but I think we were covering...
55, and I thought you guys, the reverse was 30.
Yeah, I thought it was at least half, yeah. And it, you know, when it comes to city infrastructure too, then, you know, we have a little bit more leeway to, to put more money in towards it. But some of the things we offer, we have energy saver kits, I mean, if you guys are ever in City Hall and you stop over at the finance decks, desk or community development, get an energy saver kit, it's got LED bulbs, faucet aerators, smart power strips in them. We give those out to any North St. Paul residents. Yep, we got, we just started, now, they're down there, so should grab one on the way out. Air purifiers with filters, they're just more energy efficient air purifiers. And then in the holiday season, we do the holiday lighting strings, LED holiday lighting.
Where do I get my air purifier?
Right downstairs, you can grab one on the way out, yeah, on the finance side, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, there's a, we have, I think we originally purchased 500 units and 500 filters. We have probably 175 left. They have probably 80 of them downstairs, so. We do have energy saving tips on our website, if you're on the city site, and there's a tab on the electric for energy savings. We recently added, there was a great resource from City of Elk River, had a, a good flyer that had breakdowns of, you know, what an average appliance is doing, what rooms in your house are costing you what in power, things you can do to shore up, you know, having better insulation value, or, you can track your consumption, it gives you a, a way to calculate your consumption based on how much you're using and how, how long it's been. It's a KWH calculator. But basically, you know, I think that the main thing comes down to utilizing some of the stuff that we offer, you know, and those eco kits, you know, replacing incandescent bulbs with LEDs. The faucet aerators are a nice addition, you know, they're saving you on not only how much water you're using, but heating the water. And then these smart power strips, kind of a good and bad, there's, you know, they're, they're meant to, certain parts in the plug will shut off if you turn the power off to that unit. It'll just kill the power to that, so you don't have any like parasitic draws. But now with all the smart technology out there, smart TVs, it all needs to be running all the time anyways, so there's give and take with that. All right, I'm almost done. Some of the challenges that are facing us going into the future here, that supply chain, material costs are kind of hand in hand, and then your grid sustainability, I think that's pretty prevalent with, you know, the e-vehicles and, I mean, I'm sure you've seen in the news in, in recent years, the data centers popping up everywhere. I'm not sure if we're that concerned about them popping up here, but they affect everybody, so just a little bit on that. The supply chains, we're still seeing one to two-year lead times on critical pieces of equipment. It's just causing us to have to, you know, plan better to, and that's, you know, on the consent tonight, I've, for those pad mount transformers, that's just, they still take a while to get in, so we gotta, we gotta get them in, we gotta make the order now, so. And it's causing us to, you know, sometimes reach out to distributors we haven't worked with in the past. There's goods and bads with that, you might be making a good connection for the future, but you're also taking a risk with something that, you know, you might be getting a product that you just haven't used that brand before, and you don't know really what you're getting there. We're also seeing a lack of bids and quotes on certain items and like, you know, we have contractors that come in, put our conduit underground. You know, they'll, they won't even bid it because they know their price won't compete with, on other companies. Some people just kind of have it cornered, so you, you get the one bid and then a few more that just say, I'm not even gonna, I'm not even gonna try. And unfortunately, I think that's the new norm, I don't see it going back to the way it was anytime soon. But, you know, that's just, it just causes us to have to try and plan better. Again, with material costs, it's the same thing, I think it's kind of the new norm. They're still high on crucial pieces of equipment, you know, double to triple the cost they were three to five years ago. And, but the prices have kind of stabilized, they haven't been hiking back up from the last couple of years. But then again, how are the, you know, how are the tariffs and all that, impact that stuff? I think in speaking with other utility heads, it's, it's, they all have kind of different approaches to it, some are saying they want as much as they can get on American soil now, or even before, you know, these went into effect. But, you know, what, what will it lead to? Will it lead to, you know, more local manufacturing? Will it lead to more partnerships from overseas? I, it's hard to say at this time, but I think for, for us, for our size and for, and for what we plan each year, I think we're, we're still doing good, and, and the way we're operating can continue. But some of them bigger utilities, that's definitely something that they have to take into consideration, so. I do have on here, let's see here, I got something on grid sustainability, yeah. So the, our current infrastructure in the city, I think, is well-suited for increased demand for, you know, EV chargers, we have extra conduits in place for adding in the downtown area. I think the biggest thing is looking at site-by-site basis, does, does a transformer need to be upgraded in that location, and how often is that going to happen going forward? And, and, you know, it's a, it's not a huge cost time and time again, but it'll add up, just, you know, being prepared for that. We, let's see here, I, I did mention data centers. You know, something, I just doing a little bit more research myself on them, but, you know, on a, on a peak consumption day here in North St. Paul, we might see seven megawatts of usage. And on an average, like 100-megawatt data center, they don't typically run at 100% capacity, you might see 10 megawatts a day. I mean, that data center's more than our entire city. That's, that's just the reality, and, you know, you kind of look at the, they've got maps out there for the United States where, you know, I think it was Northern Virginia kind of leading the way, where everything kind of started in there. There's, I don't know, 10 to 1, all the data centers are there. But Minnesota's kind of on the lagging edge, I think, but even some of the communities that we're with for MMPA, they're, they have data centers and they have data centers going in, or there's talk of them going in. Again, I don't know where one could ever go here, but...
Can I add to that? The, actually, last council meeting you guys approved, we updated the weighted voting conditions that we have through MMPA, and that's due to, there was one of the cities that was looking at a data center that if they were to move in, they would have more than 50% of the power combined of all the 12 cities that are in our power agency. I mean, these are sizable loads, so, yeah, they're out there.
Yeah, I think with the current weighted voting, the biggest city's just over 25%. Shakopee is in our organization. But yeah, if, if one of those, like I said, one of them data centers, more than just us, so.
Rosemont, they're looking at that one for Amazon, I think it's Rosemont, they're looking at putting that one down there.
Yeah, I think the one in Chaska was Cloud HQ. And it all kind of, there's, I could talk about them too for a while, but it all depends on, you know, what's the risk to the utility, what's the, is this a reputable company coming in? Because a lot of times they're building it and they're not the ones that are, they're just, you know, leasing it out to other companies to come in there. Are they going to fill up? Are they going to use what they say they're going to use? And how much are you investing towards? How much risk are you putting into it? So there needs to be, you know, there's a lot of, it's a, it's a big process, I mean, they've been working on that Cloud HQ one for six or seven years now, just to try and get everything in place to mitigate risk to the utility. And when it gets to that size, MMPA kind of steps in as, it's not just the city working toward, it's the organization working towards that. But anyway, yeah, like I said, I could, we can have conversations about it all we want. If you guys want to call me or stop by the shop anytime. Just to kind of close things up, I got our short term and long term, at least my own personal for the department. Short term, I, I'd like to start looking into utilizing new technologies. We, we have digital mapping currently. It's, it's something that we're working on with WSB to improve. I want it to be something that the guys can utilize in the field with use of like iPads and stuff like that. Right now, we do paper, it's good, the guys love it, they can read it good, but it's just, it leaves, there's, there's so much more information that could be at your fingertips, you know, if you, if we had good digital mapping, you could click on a pole and see everything you need about what's on that pole, you know. Something that we've recently looked into is drones. Utilities utilize them for, we do pole inspections every year. We send a crew out there checking the poles on the base, but they're also, anyone they can set up and go up on, they're going up and they're visualizing the entire, anything rotten on the top, is there anything broken, needs to be fixed? With a drone, we could set up at the end of the block and drive the entire block, checking out the top of every single pole. They also have thermal imaging, where we could check out hotspots at our substation or on a pole-to-pole basis, just see if we have any bad insulators or anything that could be a critical failure in the future. We, we do have one at the sub, or for using at the sub, yeah. Yeah, yeah, just something that, like I said, it's, it's all stuff that I think would be cool to venture down. Time of use metering is something that I've seriously considered, that's, other utilities in our power agency, they utilize it. It's essentially for people, mainly for, with e-vehicles, it's dedicated service for that vehicle, and they get lower rates in the middle of the night. We don't have a program currently for that. But definitely something that, I've done some research on it, and we have, like I said, other utilities in our, our organization that, that utilize that program currently, so. I want to keep exposing our apprentices to new challenges. Just recently, we sent some of our guys down to Florida to work at the Tropical Storm Milton. It was the first time in quite some time we've done mutual aid, we've done mutual aid within the state in the past, but I think this is the first time that I can recall that we've done anything out of state. The guys went down there, they were down there for about two weeks, and they got to experience a lot of things that I think, you know, you don't get to every day working in our small utility. I do think a big thing for us is trying to retain quality workers, and when a guy can become a journeyman, he has the ability to, if he wants to go work somewhere else, it's, it's pretty easy for them to move laterally. So I, I'd like to have that as kind of a, you have an opportunity here to, to get those experiences. I even attached a little video if we had time to watch it. Ava put this together with the, she's her...
Nice.
Yeah, this is on the Instagram.
I'm Cole Tanner, I've been with North St. Paul for three years now.
My name's Holden, I've been working for the city for around six to seven years now. Sunday the 6th, our boss, John, he messaged us and asked if anybody was available to go down and do a, a line work down in Florida for the Storm Milton. I responded right away, and then so did Cole.
Next morning, we came in the shop, loaded up the truck with everything. So we got this new Altech bucket truck, it's a 55-foot, it's our first time bringing us out of town.
We got dispatched down to Kissimmee. The storm actually didn't hit Kissimmee very hard, so we ended up having to sit on standby, but then Kissimmee reached out to us and they said that they're going to release us and send us down to Orlando. And we immediately started working, fixing down phases and blown cutouts everywhere, a lot of trees down on power lines too, to send us out there to investigate, so you have no idea what you're going to come into and stumble across.
A lot of lightning, broken wires, downed wires.
So a lot of the power lines that we stumbled across, there was crystallization, and you could see where the line was burning on the ground.
Especially on the drive down to Florida, there was a lot of people recording, you know, all the bucket trucks going down the road, giving us thumbs up, clapping, stuff like that.
Some thank yous, saw people with thank you signs. I'm just really grateful that City of North St. Paul was able to send us down there. Not every opportunity that we get, we were able to go out because we're so busy here. Grateful for the experience, that's for sure.
It was great to hear a lot of their stories when they came back, just the stuff that they got.
I'm Cole Tanner.
Down there. And definitely just look forward to, you know, we're busy here, and if we can't send people, we can't send people, but, you know, sometimes we get opportunities like that. I think it's a great, great thing to do, so. Real quick, last thing here, long term, and I think these are things that you, you're constantly striving for, I don't know what the timeline on something like it is, or if it's something that's even possible in my lifetime, but it's something I think when you're planning projects or you're working each year, you're always keeping these in mind to try and achieve that goal eventually. Entire system underground, there's a lot to that, but that's what we do each year, we're replacing old underground, but we're also installing new to replace the overhead. It kind of varies year to year and, and just, you know, what the age of some of the old cable is and, and what's realistic for us to go after. And with that, having everything loop-fed, having the ability to, if the power goes out, we can quick redirect it from another direction. That's the case for almost, almost all of our underground, but everything we put in is just, that, that has to be a priority, is just the reliability in this, you know, needs to be there. MMPA and us working towards 100% renewables, again, like I said, that's a very steep goal, and we can have conversations about that, but I think the 80% and potentially the 9% are achievable. And then I, I'd just like to keep offering as many incentives and rebates as we possibly can. You know, we, we're surrounded by XL, that's what we compare to, and I think people, they're a big company, they can partner with different... And I think people, they're a big company. They can partner with different, different companies and different products. That's not really something we do, but they're able to offer these programs to people and that's, and that's what we compare to. So I, I think anything we can do to try and offer whatever we can to try and stay competitive with them, I think is a great thing, so. Obviously within our means, but. Anything to help people, programs for residents and then just to help people save money, so. That's, that's really all I have. Again, if you have any questions, you can always, we can talk now. We can definitely have phone call or email in the future and then you guys can always schedule a time to come down and tour the shop, so.
Great. Appreciate it. Any questions?
Thanks.
Of course.
The only question I have would be like, if I decide I want to do underground, would we talk to you first or electrician or how? How would we?
I think a good path to go would be to talk to us because we can go out there and tell you if you need to have that meter box upgraded or not.
Okay, so start with that.
Because sometimes even electricians will charge you just for their time to come.
Sure.
Now, let me ask you this, and do you have any electricians that work through the city that would be a price break for the homeowner?
Do not.
Not yet?
Okay. And a quick question with the underground too. So can everybody in North St. Paul get their line underground or is there certain spots where it's still only aerial?
I mean, it's, it's possible. It's a, it's kind of a case by case. The six hundred and fifty is the standard underground install. If you have a basketball court attached to your house and your meter box is there, that's not a normal install. We have to either rip up that basketball court or we got to find a way to go around it and relocate things. So it, it goes, there's, there's times where we do charge by the foot.
Sure.
But the standard six fifty, that's for, for anybody.
But there's underground that can be provided at every house with, in North St. Paul? I mean, there may be some, you know, in between things, but you know, we can do that. And then when you said it, which I was very interested in, because if you lose it on the wire, you're down. But this, they feed from two directions, each one of your boxes then, so it's loop? So is there a way to grab power from somewhere else then?
I mean, I can't guarantee everywhere, but typically any of our underground has some sort of loop feed.
Or gives somebody a peace of mind if they have a medical issue or they have different things where, you know, it might be able to.
I should say that, I mean, we have the capability with overhead to do the same thing.
You do.
For the most part, yeah.
But that's not built in like underground is.
Underground, it's, it's more critical because when there's failure on underground, we can't just put the wire back together. Yeah.
Now, do they drill underground then? Do you guys have a auger that goes underneath property and that? Or do you?
When we install, we do not. We dig.
You just dig it all out?
Yep. We have a, we have a couple of different pieces of equipment for that. Walk behind trencher is probably the least invasive. We also have a little mini excavator that'll, that'll fit through a thirty-inch gate as well.
Just so you know, when they're talking about loop feeding, that's more the high voltage. That is the loop feed. It's not the lower voltage.
Yeah, you wouldn't have two lines going to your house.
Nope, but it can help the other one, so we grab on.
Something happened on the high voltage, we'd be able to quickly get you back on from another direction.
Which, there's a lot of, we have an older community and there's a lot of, you know, people that have machines they need, so.
And it's, it's definitely, there's a, I said I could talk for a while, but there's a process to, you know, the people that have medical needs, like they need to stay updated on our, we keep track of that. But it's, it doesn't, once you apply, it's not like it's there forever, so you need to keep.
I didn't know we even offered that, so that's good information.
We do have that, yeah.
Okay.
So it, and there's a balance to that because there's stuff, like if we can get the power going in fifteen minutes, we're not going to go straight to that house. It's going to get on in fifteen minutes, so.
Sure. Yeah, you guys have done a great job with that, so it's much appreciated. You know, that's where, today, especially a day like today, you know, reliable, like you said, the different sources. But you know, we don't think when we turn on a switch or something, is it going to happen or not? We know it's going to happen, so. I hope we keep that in mind when it comes to some of this new stuff, that it works.
Yeah.
Now, all of the new construction on Seventeenth and Delaware, that's all going underground, right?
Yep, we have the conduit in place. We're, in February, the cabinets will arrive and then we'll be able to start installing the wires. We installed wires there too early and we had a Whittler try to steal the wire. They cut, they cut one of the pieces and they, we have these ground rods in there. They look like they're copper. They're just copper plated. And they tried to cut that and broke their tool, so. We're lucky that they broke their tool.
Feel bad for them.
Yeah.
Well, the electric department does a great job and we sure appreciate it because, you know, you look sometimes and it takes quite a while around town for other towns and us. It's really greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Next.
I had used some speed talk.
Good to say.
Shouldn't have let him go first.
Here he comes. Thank you. Always to the rescue. Appreciate it.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can. Stop if you got, or stop me if you got any questions, but I got a lot of subjects to talk about here, so I'll try to go through them as quickly as I can. And like I said, stop with, stop me with any questions that you have. So Public Works, positions at Public Works. When I started here, I suppose it's like seventeen years ago, seventeen, eighteen years ago. There used to be two departments. There was Water Sewer, which was four guys, and then Streets and Parks, which there was ten guys. So there's a total of fourteen guys. Over the course of, I don't know, maybe ten years, that working group was whittled down to about eight people, people retiring, just not replacing people, you know, for whatever the reasons were. With that, what we ended up doing is you need to carry a water and sewer license to work in the water and sewer department. So everybody on the crew had to go out there and get their water and sewer licenses, so we just had enough people for coverage for nights, weekends. Again, like the electric department, twenty-four, seven, there's always someone on call. We have an on-call guy that's on, on-call that switches weekly. We do have ten positions right now. We had added a position, I believe, last year. You guys approved for us to get an additional position, which, you know, helps out greatly. So the guys are basically on call once every ten weeks. It's a rotating schedule. And then Randy and I are pretty much on call all the time. One of us is usually around if, or one of us is always around, you know, at work or after hours. So it's just, we're covering twenty-four, seven, kind of no matter what happens. So we have up there, we have one mechanic. In the summertime, we hire five to six seasonals. Depending on who, you know, if the kids want to work, we've been having trouble getting people to work. But I think the last two years, we've had about five seasonals and then a horticulturist. Myself and then Public Works Director and then Public Works Supervisor, Randy. Fleet Manager, we do that with the program. Randy and I manage the fleet or our fleet of vehicles. I believe we have about two hundred and some pieces of equipment, two hundred. That's counting weed whips and all the small, all the small stuff. But managing all that, keeping all that going with one mechanic, it's, sometimes can be a challenge, but the, the program that we have helps us with that. Engineer Consultant, that's WSB. You guys, I think most of you guys have met Morgan. Morgan helps us out. Morgan knows a lot more about some of the stuff than I do or Randy and I do just because he's got a little more background, you know, in some of the stuff. But we're getting up to speed with his help on, on a lot of that stuff. And Construction Inspector, that's when we have our big road projects. WSB has an inspector that's onsite basically every minute that the contractor is onsite watching, keeping track of everything that they do. Our Public Works goals are main, to maintain, you know, the core services to the highest level that we can. Streets, parks, water, sewer, sanitary sewer, storm, forestry, building maintenance. So each day with the ten people that we have, that's on our best day, we have ten people. We're kind of picking and choosing or prioritizing what we're going to do and what we're not going to do for that day. Most of the days, we make, we have a morning meeting every morning to kind of dole out the work and make a plan. And there's a lot of days we go in a totally different direction an hour into the day, depending on, you know, what happens. So our guys have to be very flexible with what they do. Again, with the ten people, we don't have separate departments. We're one department and everyone has to have their water and sewer license, you know, to, to work there. Basically, you don't have to have that when we hire you. You have, you, you have to actually work in the water sewer department for three years before they'll let you go, take the classes and then take the test for that. So they have to have some experience and that's a state requirement that they, that they require. Try to take, you know, great pride in our work, get the work done in a timely manner and then try to be more proactive than reactive to stuff. But a lot of our job is reactive to weather stuff. Our streets, and again, I could talk probably all, just for a whole session on the street part. But we basically have a street rating that we do, that WSB does every, every year to rate our streets to give us a guide to where we're going to look at spending our pavement management money, where road projects are going to be or where we're going to go. Along with WSB and the engineers going out and doing their surveys of the road, once they have that information, we sit down with, they sit down with myself, Randy, and then a couple of the people that go out and actually do the patching of our roads. So they actually walk every step of these roads. And then we come up with a kind of a conclusion or an area that we feel is, you know, highest priority. A lot of our roads are bad, you know, so we can go all over town, you can kind of throw a rock and people could say, hey, Matt, my road is, you know, terrible in a lot of different areas. But we have to, there's a system that we use to try to prioritize it the best that we can and stick within the budget that we have. On a yearly average, we put down about five hundred tons of asphalt. That's our guys basically shoveling asphalt. And that might be a little, little heavy because we go and do some skin patching with a skid steer towards the end of the year. But basically, on average, four to five hundred tons is what we shovel out for potholes to fill our roads. Hopefully with our, the extra pavement management money that we got, we're going to be covering up a lot of these roads that we patch multiple times, maybe in a spring season. And just for patching, so you guys know, the new council members, in the springtime, the freeze thaw, that's when the potholes really come out. We go out and patch some of those potholes multiple times in the spring. And what we do, kind of how we work in, in the springtime when we can go out and get hot mix, is we go out, we do the wheelbusters. We do the big ones first. So you might hear people say, hey, a Public Works came, they patched four potholes on my road and then they took off. Well, we did the wheelbusters because there's a bunch of them all over town. We will come back once we get our summertime crew in to help with the patching. Patching takes about four to five, minimum of four people, but five to six peoples to go out and fill the potholes, roll them and do it properly. So if you do get some of those complaints, why did Public Works fill in a couple holes and leave? We're filling the biggest holes that we can or, and then kind of moving on to try to catch the city. And then we do kind of our patching once we get help in, in the springtime. Yeah, I'll move on here, so I don't run out of time. Snow plowing, snow plowing is a huge priority for us in the, in the wintertime. We take great pride in, you know, getting our, our roads cleared as quickly as possible. Again, a quick overview of our snow plowing, we have main roads. We have a map. I should have included it in here. I made some notes while John was talking. But we have some main feeder roads that are in town. Margaret, Eleventh Avenue, First Street. So there's some main roads that we may plow multiple times. And we may not go out and do the side roads until it's done snowing. So we may go out if we get, depending on when the snow is and the timing of it, we may go out, just open up the main roads, leave the side roads, just so people can get to the main roads and kind of get out of town. But again, people are saying, hey, the Paul went by my house three different times in a snow event. You might live on a main road, that is why. Cassidy lives on a main road, so she might have to shovel multiple times at the end of her driveway.
Four thirty in the morning.
But again, I could talk quite a bit, quite long on this also. Yeah, and basically, like I said, with our ten guys, it takes, it takes nine guys to go out and plow, or nine people to go out and plow. And on an average snowfall, we can usually get town cleared out. This would be sidewalks, pass, roads. In six to seven hours, we can, on an average event, that's barring no breakdowns or any equipment breaking down or someone having to go, you know, fill in on another route.
Have routes set up then for north, south, east and west?
We do, yep. And basically, the breakdown of that is we have four big truck routes, which is, the city's broken into quarters. And our main roads, basically what happens is two guys team up on each side of town, north and south. So you'll see two trucks together on the main roads because a lot of those roads are wider, so you, we make one pass with two trucks. So it takes about an hour and a half, hour and forty-five minutes to get through the main roads. And then those guys break off and go to their routes after we get the main roads open. Streets, street sweeping. It's, I never knew how important street sweeping was until I started working for the city and working with the watershed district for how much they want you to sweep the roads. Just all the debris that, that cars leave behind and just sand and the salt and everything. We don't put sand down, we put straight salt down. But the leaves and everything that they don't want going down your storm sewers and into the lakes. We are fortunate. We average, we average, we get out about six to eight times a year, which a lot of cities get out, maybe just a spring and a fall sweep. Meeting with the watershed districts, they are, they offer grants to cities for an, an extra employee for the sweeping season, extra equipment or to contract someone out because they want these cities to be out more sweeping the streets. And with that, it gets into the stormwater stuff where when we do a road project now, they take, and Morgan would be able to talk way more intelligently about this than I can. But if we take up so much road or replace so much road, they have a formula that, that they use where we have to go and build a pond bigger to accept stormwater. But the, the watershed district really, they end up costing the cities a lot more because we got to upsize storm pipes and per this calculation. So street sweeping is kind of a big thing. Like I said, we're fortunate enough. We basically have a sweeper, a sweeper out, you know, constantly for two or three months at a time sometimes, so. Our parks, you know, our park amenities, we grow, continue to grow, so there's a need for maintenance. You know, citywide building maintenance and cleanup after events at the parks. The desire to, you know, enhance safety and appearance of the park buildings, improving the grounds maintenance. We control irrigation playgrounds. You know, we're doing things. We added irrigation to around Casey last year. You know, to try to make that look nicer because there's no irrigation or just to get grass to grow there and, you know, just make that more appealing. And parks mowing, we have two people out mowing minimum every single day of the growing season. In the springtime, depending on what time, type, type of spring it is, we have to mow some of the stuff twice. And the, the hard part is if we let it go. And the, the hard part is, if we let it go, it's only, to go and bag Casey Lake Park, it would take us forever, and we don't have the equipment really to bag a whole park like that. So it is something that we have to go out, and I talked last year about it, it was so wet in the spring, we, we had to get out and mow, and they spent as much time towing each other out or getting stuck, you know, trying to mow this. But it is something that, you know, again, we have to stay on. Water. We have about forty-eight hundred water meters that we maintain. The water meters were placed about, were all replaced about fifteen years ago, over a three to five year time period. In the next four to five years, we're coming up on, the life of the water meters are twenty years. The commercial meters are ten years, and we have reached the end of life of a lot of the commercial meters, and they're going out like clockwork at ten years. Now, the water meters that were installed, are, it's a whole sealed unit, so the whole water meter has to be replaced. You can't replace the battery. So we have just, you know, sporadic ones that go out here and there, but, you know, on a day-to-day basis, we're out replacing some of those meters, but in the upcoming years, we will be having to do a full replacement of, it'll probably be over a three to five year time span again, to replace all those. Again, maintenance that we do on our system is flushing hydrants in the spring and fall. We try to go out and we do valve turning, exercise all of our valves. That is something that gets put on the back burner, depending on what's going on, on the, on a day-to-day basis. But going out and exercising those, we can find, you know, if there's bolts that are rotted off, if there's, you know, any problems with them, you know, come up with a list of stuff to, to, you know, for replacing those. The lead service line inventory, I know we've talked a little bit about this, but that's a big thing that we're working on right now, is mandated by federal. They want, the EPA wants, all the lead service lines to be replaced in the United States in ten years, which it's totally unrealistic, but they started off by having to do an inventory for the city. We just turned our inventory in, that we did, and that was where, where we had residents could go online, report what type of service line they had in their house, but not, we just don't need to find out what's in the house. We have to find out what's from the curb stop, or the shut-off in your yard, out to the main. And they're even requiring us to excavate down to find out what those are. We have about fourteen hundred reports, or, that we have reported in, where we know for sure one side of it, but we don't know the other side. We, it's still a work in progress of how this is going to go, how this is going to play, play out in the years to come, but this is a big thing that is mandated federally. There's going to be grant money out there for people to get lines replaced, but we still have to work on our inventory. And then we also have to, we do lead testing for water that we had houses, like thirty houses that we have to do once every three years. With our service line, lead service lines reporting, what we have in so far, the, the twelve to fourteen hundred that we have in, we have thirty-eight known lead service lines in homes, and then we have another additional, like sixty to sixty-five galvanized lines, which they also consider, it falls in a lead category, even though it's not lead, because galvanized, it, the corrosion that happens in that pipe, they, they claim, if there's anything lead ever hooked up to it, that there's probably something in there. It's not, it's not dangerous to the people, it's not like if you have a lead service line, they have to stop using their water, they just suggest you run your water longer, but the goal is to replace all those lines. And again, I'm just touching very briefly on this, because I'm going to try to get through. I'm running out, way out of time. Yeah, yeah.
We'd like to have you.
Yep. So, yes, that's. Water, sanitary sewer, we currently have about forty-seven miles of sanitary sewer lines. We have four lift stations in town. What, our goal, what our policy is, is we get through the city in, the city's divided into thirds for cleaning. So we get through one, a third of the city every year, and that's all documented. The last few years, we've had a company coming in that's helping us clean and gather information. They camera all of our sewer pipes and gather, gather all the information for where service lines are, and it, it's, it's a huge help to us, because we're going to have a ton of information that's going to be connected to our sanitary sewer, that we can have, gain all this information that we've never had before in having on our mapping. But basically, in the summertime, we have two of our guys, minimumly, out pretty much every single day, cleaning the sewer lines to get through a third, a third of the town each year. And again, I could talk an hour on that also. Storm sewer, again, I touched, I kind of talked about that. The storm sewer stuff, that becomes when we do these road projects, like, we have to increase the size of the pond that's in Casey, because of the storms, or because of the road project that we're going to do. So that pond will be expanded, and that's dictated by the watershed of what that needs to be. So they have a, they have a lot of pull in these projects, and it adds a ton of cost. We were just at a meeting about, with the watershed district, talking about that, and a lot of the cities were complaining about how strict they were with this stuff, because it adds such a cost to the project. So again, storm sewer is a big thing. Downtown district with everything, with all the new apartments going in town, I, I know I've touched on this before, but we clean, when we clean downtown, we have basically from one AM earliest to about five AM, six AM, to get the snow out of downtown. And we clean, how we clean downtown, is we don't have any banks for people to step over. We kind of plow everything out into the road. We have a contractor that works down there with a skid steer. Depending, depending on how much snow, we'll send another skid steer down there. And then we have a loader with a sixteen-foot pusher. We actually have two loaders now with sixteen-foot pushers, and we go and we push that snow to each end of town, make piles, and then we haul that stuff away later. But we only have that short timeframe to do it. So with the addition of the apartments and running out of places, once it gets a little more developed down there, we're not going to have these places to pile this snow. So we're going to have to look at doing it differently. We have a loader that we lease, we leased it last year and we leased it this year, and that's to help us gauge if we're going to be able to handle it with just another guy in this loader, because we have to, we, we're going to have to push the snow further to make these piles. So we're, we're kind of testing the waters to see, hey, can we just do this with adding another guy down there and not having to haul it out immediately? So there's going to be additional work as that develops down there for us. Forestry. Emerald Ash Bore, we had the, the grant that we received, it was four hundred thousand dollars last year. Three hundred thousand dollars of that was for our boulevard trees, and a hundred thousand dollars of that was for residential trees. We spent all hundred thousand dollars on residential trees. Private ash trees, there's thirty-eight applications that we fulfilled with that. We removed eighty-one private trees with that, with that grant, and we basically spent all the money for that, so there won't be, there's nothing left for the residents for that. We spent, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left of the remaining grant that we have. We removed ninety trees last year with that grant, ground the stumps, and planted ninety new trees with that. They came out, and they do an audit to make sure, and they went to every single location, and, because everything had to be GPSed and, you know, just to make sure. But Dan just received the check, just, I think, last week or the week before, of over two hundred thousand dollars, and they paid ninety percent of it, they withhold ten percent of what we spent, until the whole project's done, and then they, they reimburse you for the rest. But our, our goal is to do another fifty to seventy-five trees with this grant, the rest of the grant money. Our plan is to hopefully have it spent down this year. We have three hundred, so we started off with fifteen hundred ash trees that needed to be removed. It was a ten-year plan. We have three hundred and fifteen of the fifteen hundred remaining to do. We're treating seventy ash trees right now, they're mostly in parks, just to buy us some time. They're eventually going to have to be removed, but they're just buying us some time with that. Again, I could speak a lot longer on this, but I'll go quick here. Mechanic shop, I talked a little bit about that, we have one mechanic, two hundred and five pieces of equipment. You know, he does a great job, we work, you know, closely with him, so he doesn't get overwhelmed. But, yep, I guess that's all I'll say on that. And again, this is just kind of a daily worksheet that we have. Like I said, it's, we kind of pick what we're not going to do on a day-to-day basis, you know, with the guys that we have. But at this point, like I said, that extra person that we got, you know, helped us out a ton. You know, I think we're in a pretty good spot, you know, as far as what we have to take care of and manage. But, yes, I rushed way through that, but. For the new council members, like I said, if you guys have any questions, like John said, tour the shop, whatever, you know, we can answer for you. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that, that you guys have, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything you guys do. We have a great electric, we have a great Public Works, it's, we appreciate it all.
Oh, thanks, and like I said, we appreciate the support that you guys give us for this, and, you know.
Have you ever thought of putting, going to the tech schools and putting an apprentice small engine man to do all your small engine work to help your shop?
We talked about all these different ideas with that, because we were without a mechanic for a year, because we just couldn't find one. The, the only, the only problem with that is, that, that job is very unique, because it's everything from a weed whip to a diesel truck and air brakes.
Right, no, but I'm saying, for, you know, the individual coming, doing small engine work, like your weed whips, your lawn mowers, doing all the oil changes, sharpening blades, that would keep him busy, especially in the afternoons, when some of these guys come back after doing their mowing in the morning, that he would be able to get on a couple mach, pieces each day to get it fixed for the next morning.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we could look into, you know, as kind of maybe a summer, summer apprentice type thing, you know, for that, but, yeah. Yeah.
All right. Well, anybody else?
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ron.
All right.
Thanks, Randy.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah, next time you have to keep a little quiet, Randy. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn? So moved, Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Woods, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Council need a little, few minutes here before we start up? Okay, well, come, give us five minutes. Thank you.